Okay. All right. We're gonna start her up. Okay. So Brad, Ted's calling in. How we do this?
Speaker.
Speaker. Volume's up. Speaker's on.
Ted, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, I'm gonna put the phone down by the speaker and we're gonna get the meeting started.
Okay.
All right, welcome. This is the, uh, the workshop, August ninth, twenty twenty-three, Curry County Board of Commissioners. And I call the meeting to order. We'll stand please and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless the United States and Curry County. Um, amendment, approval of the agenda. Agenda? Agenda. Um, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, not the agenda. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
If I say yes, motion carries three to zero. We are right to the meat of the workshop presentation, public and mental health. So we're here, on April twenty-eighth, a resolution was passed. Twenty twenty-one, on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, a resolution was passed transferring local public health authority responsibility to the Oregon Health Authority. On May sixth, twenty twenty-one, a resolution was passed to relinquish local mental health authority to the Oregon Health Authority as well. Commissioners have brought up the desire to discuss taking back the administration of public and mental health services in Curry County. Let the discussion begin.
Um, you want me to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, so I'll start. We, so, uh, a lot of this, uh, discussion, uh, came up in, uh, a county college. So, OHA was there, um, you know, obviously during the multiple months you get every state agency. Um, during that process, uh, Oregon Health Authority was there and, um, or OHA, um, and, and, yes, and, uh, they, the, the topic in discussion came about, um, Curry's desire to, uh, take back, um, local control over, uh, oversight of public and mental health. And, um, they were more than pleased at that idea.
The Oregon Health Authority?
Yeah, they, uh,
The state?
The state doesn't, this is an anomaly, right?
Yeah, we might be the only county that did it.
And, um, and so they, they, you know, the state has, at least in what they communicated to us, very little desire to, uh, manage local, um, public health and local mental health, uh, programs. And so the discussion began about, well, okay, so what do we do to essentially work towards this? And, uh, it's a little unprecedented because it, there's a lot of unknowns. Um, but they said, you know, best part, best way is to begin is to begin with, um, you know, uh, essentially, they, they, they didn't talk about doing a workshop, they talked about, you know, the commissioners agreeing, uh, in a meeting that, that was the desire and then begin, you, and then that, that would be, uh, the, what would prompt next steps with OHA and the state. And I think in our discussions, uh, in previous meetings, we thought it would be prudent to first have a workshop with all of our providers, and, and, you know, and discuss what that potentially could look like.
That's where you folks come into play. A lot of providers, so would we like, as a board, just to, to introduce everybody, have everybody introduce themselves, just so we kind of know who all is here and? So Sammy, you're in the front, you're in the front row, you're like, uh?
Uh, Sam Vaughn, uh, Community Health, uh, Community Engagement Manager for Advanced Health. CCO, Cooperative Care Organization, covers both Coos and Curry County.
Okay.
Where's the, where's the line for you in all care? Like in terms of CCOs?
We don't have a line.
We're hugging.
Oh, that's nice.
We, we actually work very well, uh, we don't have necessarily a set line where they can cover Brookings, we, no.
Okay.
We, we have, we have, uh, consumer members in every city.
Okay.
And all care does the same, I suppose.
I would actually like you to.
Okay.
No, it's good. That, that actually came up at this as well, I mean, so you have essentially twenty-five new commissioners, right? And everybody's learning the ropes and, um, the topic of CCOs comes up and, um, it's, uh, it's a somewhat of a rarity to have dual CCOs in a smaller county like this. In the bigger counties, it's, it's more normalized. And so that was, uh, was part of the topics that come.
Yeah, I, it, it's not as, you know, as popular, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, we, I think we get along very, very well together. We, um, I talked to Laura probably weekly.
Good.
Yeah.
Cause it's not just two, right? There's?
No, it's two.
It's just.
Okay, what about, yeah, but what about, I mean, so you guys don't go up to Coast Community Health where?
No, they're a provider, not a CCO.
Okay, they're, okay.
Correct.
Oh, I apologize for not knowing all the acronyms.
No, it's fine.
Yeah. So, sir, we'll start with you, Nick.
I'm Josh Ballack, I'm the Vice President of Health Policy for All Care.
Okay.
And my name is Laura McKean and I'm the Senior Director of Oral Health Services and Community Engagement for All Care.
Hi, I'm Bevyn Ankrum, I'm with the Oregon Health Authority and I support both All Care and Advanced Health in Coos and Curry County.
Great.
Melissa Henderson, I'm the Community and Tribal Liaison for Advanced Health.
Connie Hunter, I don't know which hat I'm gonna talk. Um, I'll, I'll say today, I'm here on behalf of VA Roseburg Affiliated Veterans Mental Health Act of CCA.
Okay. Jerry?
Jerry Sullivan, I'm the Chief of Regional Business Operations for Adapt in Redding County. I've served four counties.
Okay.
Where the CMO is being here, in Curry and in Douglas County.
Cherie is just here as Cherie.
Cherie Moore, previous, uh, public health director, or here as a citizen, sorry, citizen.
Yeah.
I wanna know what's going on.
Dave?
Barnes, County Treasurer. I'm curious to know what's going on too. I remember when this went away and wanna know, disagreed with it at that point, would like to see you come back and wanna know what's the financial implications.
Yep, I was gonna say, Dave just wants to know what it's gonna cost.
Exactly.
Lena?
Lena Hawthorne, thank you for my earlier introduction, Josh. I am a nurse and work for Coast Community Health as a coordinator and manager of our school baseball centers in Harrow Beach and in Brookings. And I have just recently taken on the role of supervisor for our public health there.
Cool. Very nice.
Very new to that role, so hope so.
So North County as well, uh, established this, this morning, cause we got Rabia sitting right next to Lena and she's a Port Arthur gal too, so Rabia works for the county. Um, so we got our introductions. You've kind of shared what you guys learned at, at, at county college. Brad, you want any, add any of that?
Well, I'm curious to see, uh, what everybody in the room, we have the experts here, I'm curious to see what everybody's thoughts are, I'm curious to see, um, what impacts this has moving forward either way. And I'm also really interested in the community input on what the community wants to do. I've gotten, um, a few emails, uh, phone calls, et cetera, and I've talked to a lot of people that would like to see us take it back. And, um, I'm gonna continue to kind of survey and poll the community as well, uh, there'll be obviously more communication after this meeting, but, um, but I'm trying to learn, I'm trying to educate myself about it and, um, and do ultimately what the community wants to do.
So who would like to speak first in favor of or, or, um? So I, I'm the only sitting commissioner that was a part of the, um, handoff back to the, or to the state with both, uh, this, uh, public health and the mental health. And I know I talked to Jerry, um, one of the reasons Adapt came on board was because they wouldn't do it if it was just, if, if it was the county. And, and understandably, because this, this board changes every two years, it can, it has the possibility to change every two years. And they wanted something, you know, secure and Jerry, would, you wanna speak to that?
So here's what I would, what I'm gonna ask.
So I, I'm gonna ask everybody if, when you, when we do speak, that, to come to the?
So I was just gonna say, public health and mental health are two separate
Yep.
issues.
Yeah.
And so I, one concern I have is when we lump those together, they're think of as the same, they really are totally different.
Yeah, they absolutely are, but can you, um, come up to the?
We can do mental health if you want, is that?
Sure, that's, that's where we'll start.
Okay.
Start with mental health.
Really is behavioral health, right?
Okay, okay.
And closed, did you guys get the update that I, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'll just go over that briefly, um. We are, uh, as I said before, we're in four counties. And, sorry, I'm just looking for my document here. We started in Douglas County over fifty years ago, started as a substance use disorder treatment program and have steadily built with, um, various opportunities, kind of a full range of services in SUD in Douglas County, that was our only focus for thirty years. It became clear that things were changing at the federal level and that medical, uh, was gonna be more important to the support of SUD services and behavioral health, which is the whole package of SUD and mental health. And we made a decision at that time, I say we, I wasn't here then. Uh, I was only three when the company was established, so a lot of this happened before I was, uh, obviously in Florida, I was in there fourteen years. And they established an FQHC, which is a federally qualified health center in Douglas County. Um, it, it allows for enhanced rate, it allows for some very cool things to help support everything that's included in it and it has, you know, the full range of primary care services. So it was a big step, very difficult, especially for a program that was only doing SUD at that time. And our SUD up to that point was, uh, youth outpatient, adult outpatient in separate programs, and then youth residential and adult residential. And there were a few other things that were happening at the time, but that was most of it. You know, we were a company of a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five employees. Uh, over the course of that first thirty years, we were invited to come into Josephine County, uh, because of a failing SUD program. And we did, and we were invited to come into Coos County for the same reason. So we ran with those, we've been in those two counties for twenty to thirty years. But that focus really staying on the SUD side with some mental health added in and some other programs I'll talk about in just a moment. But after we got the FQHC established and, um, had operated for more than thirty years, our CEO at the time, who was a very steady hand, a great leader, who built, but he built pretty intentionally. Uh, when there was a new program, you know, you'd identify some manager somewhere who could say, okay, I'll set aside my stuff and we'll get this new thing going. That means we didn't do a lot of new stuff, one new thing at a time, no more than probably one thing a year or one every two or three years. So it took, you know, thirty years to go from five or six employees to over a hundred. Then we, we made a leadership change, we recruited a new CEO. And his focus was on, um, addiction research, but he also understood that we had to be a sustainable program. And the more narrowly focused we are, the less sustainable we are. Yeah, UHC is a great example of helping the whole organization. But he took it to a new level. So we developed project teams. I have two staff members, their whole job is just new projects, whether it's a property or a program or whatever we're working on. Right now, we have fifteen projects in some level of development, some of them are parked, some of them are moving forward, but we're always working on projects. That's a different mindset. And it's not that we're going out and pursuing this stuff, but it's really about identifying what the need is in the communities we serve and going after whatever opportunities pop up. So we're, I would say the most aggressive, uh, behavioral health provider in the state in this way. In, what year was it, twenty, I wanna say twenty fourteen, Douglas County decided they were done with mental health and public health. They gave them back to the state. About that same time, I think something happened here in Curry, I'm not as familiar with that, we weren't involved in it, but get out of the business and there's a lot of reasons for that. In twenty twelve to twenty fourteen, the CCO, uh, model was established in the state. And the funding pathway for behavioral health went from, uh, this line right through the counties. Most of it went to the CCOs instead. So counties then became part of, uh, still had some administration, especially if they had an internal program, but they didn't control the money anymore. Uh, that method or that model had some problems with it because, I don't know if you're aware of this, I'm saying that jokingly, you guys have a lot of stuff on your plate.
Right, hell, yeah.
I don't know how many different topics you guys have to work on at any given time, twenty, maybe more than that? And those pop up and they become important, right? There might be a landslide, there might be a computer hack, I don't know what kind of stuff.
Might be a fire.
Could be a few fires around, you know, various emergencies, right? Law enforcement, public health and all that, so all these things are, are time consuming and public health and mental health are the same way. So I know in Douglas County that when this happened, it was really about not being able to get productivity out of the workforce. Uh, the harder they push to do that, the more the workforce kind of pushed back. And they were thinking they were probably gonna unionize and maybe do these other things, just to really slow the whole process down. County programs generally have a productivity level of about twenty percent, that's across the state. To break even on a behavioral health service, the standard's about fifty percent. What that means is a provider who's billing, at least half their time should be spent providing direct service. That's the level that's expected. The rest of that time is vacation, training, uh, documentation, other stuff, community meetings, unbillable. So you never get a hundred percent, but if you're willing to get around fifty percent, that's pretty sustainable at the rates that exist today. Counties struggle with that. And so when you think about how to manage, uh, really administer over the top of a CMHP, it's difficult to do that from a government perspective where there's so many other things going on. It's hard to focus on just the behavioral health or just public health or whatever. So that's what motivated Douglas County. Um, I'm assuming some things happened here budget-wise and, and such that probably contributed to that too for the mental health side. Anyway, um, in Douglas County, we were asked to take over as a CMHP. This was just after our CEO, who'd been there for over thirty years, announced his retirement. He said, uh, no, we had ninety days to set up a new program, they didn't give us a lot of time and we, we just didn't feel like we could do it at that time. So CCO got together with all the providers, including us, and established a new nonprofit. They're gonna be the CMHP. So they had tons of money given to them, lots of resource. That lasted for about two years, basically the CCO tightened things up and tried to get productivity out of them. And they ran out of money. So we had a new C- CEO, was more focused on growth, more focused on opportunity and trying to help make our organization more, I don't know, broader base. And when that opportunity came up, even though we were busy with other things, brought it to the team, leadership team, and we said, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and do it. And we became the CMHP. Um, that was a big change for us, we took over a hundred employees and a whole different way of thinking. From the outside looking in, we thought, well, how hard could it be? I mean, we've done SUD for well over thirty years. And, um, it was hard. I mean, there's a lot of detail to the CMHP. And the CMHP, a lot of people don't understand, the focus is the toughest population and the most difficult services to provide. So that's what the CMHP is responsible for. And then on top of that, if you have extra capacity, you can do the easy stuff to lay on top, which is more basic mental health, kind of supporting people with mild or moderate cases of mental health issues. But your focus has to start out with the most severe parts of the population. So we did that, we stood it up, it took us about a year to a year and a half to really get the kind of staff on board with our culture and, and understanding what we were trying to do. And, uh, from that point on, things have been improving and even really pretty good, uh, today in Douglas County. Today, we have over five hundred employees, we have housing projects, we have, um, outreach, we're doing things that we never thought of doing before. And that's true in Curry County too. So when we were asked to come into Curry County, again, we were busy with projects. It was like never the right timing, whenever someone calls from the state or, or from the CCO and says, hey, we could use some help. But we entered the conversation, we talked about what the needs were and, um, they asked us what we needed. And we let them know for each stakeholder what we needed. Um, one of the pieces that was critical for us was the LMHA. In Douglas County, we are the LMHA. County commissioners are thrilled that we're the LMHA. We take on the liability for our own work. Whoever's the LMHA, they are liable for whatever the CMHP does. So if there's a big lawsuit, LMHA will be named in it because they're authority, they're the authority for the most difficult work, like commitments for, um, people who need aid and assist, who are convicted of or accused of crimes but can't aid in their own defense. All of that work goes to the CMHP. So at any rate, we've been under that model in Douglas County for seven years. Um, we've built out a, an impressive program, uh, not just for a county the size of Douglas County, but for any county in the state. Been in our position with Curry County for a year and a half. We're up to forty staff. Um, not just, you know, forty of the easy to fill staff, this is across the whole range from peers, counselors, therapists, on up to psychiatric nurse practitioners. Most people didn't think we could do it, frankly, they thought we were crazy for coming into, uh, Curry County and trying to set something like this up. And it's, it's, it's difficult in any county, but in Curry County, you know, the property issues and housing issues are even worse. And it has been a barrier. We have forty staff, but we have ten who have accepted positions and then investigated the housing situation and backed out. That's a huge number. So we could be close to fifty had those, uh, employees been able to find housing and, and make the pieces work to make the transition. For us, the LMHA is critical because we're investing. So Adapt is one of those strange organizations, like a lot of nonprofits, but we're larger, we've been around a long time. There's a lot of programs that we have that lose money. It's not about making money, nonprofits have that different mindset, especially if they've been around very long and if they're doing it the way they're supposed to. It's not about maximizing profit, it's about maximizing services. So we have some, some services that have additional revenue or excess revenue. That's necessary because that helps us have programs that lose money. That whole gamut put together is our full range of services. So we're one of three programs in the state for youth residential in Douglas County, all the others are closed. And that's because they lose money hand over, hand over fist and because liability is only increasing. But there's other programs too, our adult residential programs, we have detox now in our adult residential program, we have two OBI treatment programs, one in Douglas, one in Coos. Those are federally regulated programs that, um, are hard to come by. And, um, and then we have, of course, peers and all other kinds of work that's really helping us, uh, reach people in a different way. So for us to protect that investment, we can't have things shifting and, and moving around, we don't wanna get pulled into politics, we don't wanna see, just think about historically, if you're the, I mean, this is normally the perspective, if you're the best commissioners, if you think of yourself as being like the best commissioner you've ever served and your group is being the best, imagine the worst that's ever existed in our history. They could change things, um, the LMHA gives them the power to do that without, um, checking with anybody. Whereas under the current scenario, if we're doing a bad job, there is still that option to go to OHA and say, hey, we need some help, we need to be able to have some authority. And we have a third party who's separated, who knows mental health, who understands behavioral health, understands our role, who then gets involved in the process, asks questions, talks to CCOs, other community members, and then they can make a decision. That protects our investment. We've invested millions and I have to tell you, at the staffing levels we're talking about getting at, we will lose money every year in Curry County, at least for a while. We have plans to get to a model that will support Curry County at an even higher staffing level, but it's gonna take two years to get there. So we're kind of an unusual organization in that we're willing to take on projects that almost nobody else will. And we invest in a way that really does benefit in the, the community, uh, you know, beyond what most CMHPs. So that's who we are and our, our position on this is, not to put too fine a point on it, but if you successfully get the LMHA, we would notice you that we're not gonna be the CMHP anymore. That's the point where we make that cut. Because we don't feel we can continue to invest.
Questions?
Um, no, I mean, that's an unfortunate stance, it really is. You know, it's a, it's, it's, um, fairly, I think, normal practice around the state, um, for, uh, for counties to, uh, contract out service providing for mental health, they very rarely, many, many counties actually providing it themselves. Um, but they retain the ability to have that oversight. So I'd ask you, you do, you do, um, you do projects in Coos and Jackson?
Josephine.
Josephine. Did they also relinquish their?
So we're an SUD provider in those two counties, not the CMHP. We're the CMHP in Douglas.
So you, you provide services there, but you're not this QMHP?
Yeah, we don't have to be the CMHP to deliver services. We could deliver almost any services without being the CMHP, but those CMHP services are the ones that, you know, have the highest risk and the highest cost.
Sure.
So I'll give you an example, so we're the CMHP in Douglas County. Just every year, the fidelity programs, those are special programs for special populations. They're multidisciplinary teams, incredibly expensive, and they get reviewed every year. In order to deliver the service and bill for it, you have to pass a fidelity review. The previous provider in Curry County never was able to pass a fidelity review for any of the fidelity programs, they just couldn't do it. And the reason for that is because if you have turnover in staffing, it penalizes you and you'll never make the threshold. If you have open positions or new people. We just had our ACT review, like I say, these get done every year, ACT is for adults with severe mental illness and it's the highest level of outpatient service. It has a dedicated, I think it's a halftime in Douglas County, uh, nurse practitioner, psychiatric nurse practitioner, um, therapist, case manager, has, uh, peers and it has, um, CADC, Alcohol and Drug Analyst. And that team has to be the same people from review to review, or else you start getting penalized. Or if you have an open position, you'll be penalized even more. Our review, uh, was the highest score they've ever seen as reviewers in the state.
That's for Douglas, not for Curry?
Douglas, right, right.
Yeah.
But in Douglas County, it's all CMHPs across the state, not the highest this year, the highest they've ever seen. And that's because we've put a tremendous amount of work in supporting our workforce. We're paying higher rates than most CMHPs. You know, our benefits include full family insurance, full family, no cost. We have, you know, other benefits like time off and sick time as separate pools that they can pull from. Vacations, our 401K is five percent, but no match is required. I mean, we're going above and beyond to make sure that we have staffing to do these programs. And the results of that is that we have, uh, better programming. Now, in Curry County, we have two programs that are met fidelity out of five. And we have two more that will probably meet by the end of the year. The fifth one is tough everywhere across the state because it requires a child psychiatrist. And that's, there's not enough child psychiatrists to do all the programs in the state, the state knows this. And we're not sure exactly how they're gonna address this, but, um, And we're not sure exactly how they're going to address this, but that one's a tough sell anywhere. We have it in Douglas, but we don't have it in Curry yet. So, we are doing things that others haven't been able to do. Recruiting 40 staff into a CMHP, other CMHPs are like, they can't fill 40 positions across their whole program. We have a team of recruiters. We have four people to do recruiting full-time. We've figured out what's needed to make things work. We've sought out resources to make it work. And one of the few programs that are actually making it work during a behavioral health workforce crisis.
Jerry, what was the staffing when you guys took over?
When we took over from the previous provider, they had 13 staff in the county. And they said that's all we needed. So, we hired their 11. A couple of them we didn't hire or they didn't accept our offers. And then recruited towards 20. We didn't buy that 13 was going to be even close. And then, as we approached 20, we upped it. And each time, we kind of upped it each time. Our goal right now is 53 and a half.
Jerry, I know people are going to watch this, and then I'm going to get a bunch of feedback from them, hopefully. Can you explain and define the acronym LMHA and CMHP for people that are, maybe don't understand?
Local Mental Health Authority and the Community Mental Health Program. I think a lot of people think that the LMHA is just, has control over all mental health. It's really not true. In the old system, it was true because all the money came with it. All the money now goes, most of it, goes to the CCOs. And the CCOs are the ones who administer those dollars. They're the ones that are asking us questions about, okay, when's your fidelity program going to get up? When are you going to get these pieces in place? When are you going to get those mental health services, outpatient, adult and youth, in place? And how's your staffing levels? They're the ones that are like working with us. They're focused on healthcare. So, they get all of that. It's part of our contracts with them. It's part of our reporting to them, and we're evaluated on that. So, that's the difference, I guess, is that the LMHA has... It's important for that authority to commit people, take away their civil rights and the processes around people coming and going from the state hospital and some other pieces. It's less important now for really the whole piece about overseeing the CMHP. CMHP's responsibility has shrunk because of that. You can add anything into a CMHP you like, but the actual piece that's required is a little smaller. And I think that what you're seeing is that any county has their own CMHP. Clearly, they're going to have the LMHA. They have all that responsibility. It's their staff doing the work. Bigger counties do a lot of contracting and they'll contract with multiple providers, not just the one usually, which makes total sense. It's just a little different in the rural counties. And, you know, based on our experience and ability to take all the pieces and put them together, we work directly with the CCOs. We feel that's the best process for maximizing services and being held accountable.
So, the CCOs are the accountability piece for the county citizens who may or may not be feeling served?
Yeah. And they can also, they also have the CAC, Community Advisory Council, as part of the process for interacting with people across the whole county in order to get that feedback back to them. But that's just one of the ways.
Right, so, I'm trying to understand the whole process. I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with the system. But, okay, let's just go worst-case scenario. And, you know, you're the LMH... You're the local mental health authority. Now, if the CCOs or OHA were to decide that services aren't being localized, then how do they have any authority over the local mental health authority?
Well, the CCO controls the money. So, that's a pretty clear way. I mean, they can incentivize that the services happen even geographically.
Sure, but if they're not?
Well, that's the CCO, right? You're saying, "How do they do it?"
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, who has the ability to hold the local mental health authority accountable? Like, if it's the county, then it's the citizens.
But that's what I just said, right? So, if the CCO is like, "Oh, you're not providing enough services," then they would incentivize that. You don't get paid unless you do this. So, that CMHP, which is really the provider, then has to make a decision. They're either going to emphasize those services, the CCO is incentivizing and get the money, or they're not. I mean, if they decide not to, they're giving up on their major incentive.
At the detriment of the citizens.
And themselves. I mean, that's the incentive, right? The money is, money is how you make services happen. And for nonprofits like us, that's what we exist for. That's our mission, maximize services. We're not trying to... There's no point to not providing the service. We exist to provide the service.
Right, I understand. But I'm saying, in the event that you choose not to... Because it's, you know, it's, for whatever reason, then you would just be sacrificing the incentive.
Let's say we don't. Let's say that we, for whatever reason, we decide not to do it.
Yeah.
The CCOs would talk to OHA. OHA would talk to the CCOs. They would talk to other community members. And they could make a decision about saying, "You can't be the CMHP anymore."
Right.
They have that authority.
So, the only difference, I think, would be instead of the CCOs working with OHA, would be they would be working with the county. Is that correct?
That's a difference, but the big problem I see is, you think about county commissioners. We think about it as like the ideal, right? The best it can be. They change a lot. And behavioral health is not the primary focus. Or even healthcare is not the primary focus of the county. And so, imagine if you had two commissioners who didn't care about behavioral health, who decided they know somebody who could do a better job without understanding what that means. They could strip it away with one vote. And even OHA wouldn't be involved in that process because they have the local mental health authority.
Yeah, I... I wouldn't say there's an overarching, "Healthcare is not a priority to the county." I think a lot of people view the county priorities as a three-pronged structure of healthcare, public safety, and education. And so, to say that healthcare is not a priority for the county is, it's a bit...
So, I'm not saying it's not a priority for the county. I'm saying it's not a priority in terms of your workload. So, I can give you an example from your own history, if you like. When the commission was looking at this and talking with CCH, they were the LMHA. They were the ones that were supposed to hold them accountable. And they didn't know they were the LMHA. They didn't know how to hold them accountable because they didn't know healthcare. That's what I'm saying. They had other things to do. Your attention is divided by all the other things that come up before you. To say that you're going to be an expert in it and understand it well enough to be able to really help add value to the CMHP is unlikely. You know, in Douglas County, they figured that out. They said, "We need to find a provider who can do this and let them work with a CCO, and we'll go do other stuff because we don't want to be involved in all this." And it's worked. I mean, you can look at the Douglas County model. I would invite you to come take a tour anytime you want, even a Google tour virtually, and see what that means in Douglas County.
Well, I mean, I would assume, I hope I'd be able to just look at Curry County because it's the same model currently.
It's just older in Douglas County. So, you can see it more maturely developed in Douglas County. We have pieces in Douglas County we haven't developed at all in Curry County.
We're not there yet.
No.
Now, from what I would understand, and maybe the CCOs or OHA, is, at least this was kind of response related to us, Douglas and Curry are the only counties in Oregon that have relinquished this.
I don't know. I haven't studied the other counties. There's other nonprofits that serve as the CMHPs?
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
But I know that those two have.
Yeah. So, Owolawa, okay, so three of the 36 counties. So, yeah, I can see how that works for Adapt in Douglas. I'm trying to read the nonverbals, and I don't quite understand them, but...
So, in Curry County, you have 40 direct providers right now. You've never had that before in mental health?
That's not accurate.
So, how many do you think you've had before?
Well, I was the chair of Curry Community Health, so...
But you had public health and mental health and you had back office, right?
Yes.
This isn't back office. This isn't public health. This is direct providers for behavioral health services.
Understood, yeah.
And we're targeting 53. So, anyway, it is what it is. I just want you to understand that if you take that action, that we know what our response is. And we, you know, we are thrilled to be the CMHP in Curry County. We don't need to be. If you had a nonprofit that was established here just for that purpose, they would need to be to survive. We don't need to be.
Okay.
And if Curry County walks away from their agreement, we would see it as a breach, kind of the nuclear option in order to get rid of us. It's like the first step to getting rid of us. And it's like, that's all we need. We're not going to keep trying to fight with the county to deliver the services that, you know, we want to be able to deliver. That's how we'd see it because we have an agreement. We invested millions of dollars based on an agreement with the county, OHA, and two CCOs.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that it's viewed that way because I think the piece that the county is looking at is not changing providers, just being able to fill the gap, fill in where OHA currently stands with the CCOs in having some level of input for our citizens and the services they're providing.
There's ways to do that. I mean, input's easy. We've stayed out of the way for the most part and just tried to take care of things and report back. The last few months, I've left you guys alone because I have to tell you, you've had issue after issue come up. I felt like you were more involved in some big stuff going on in the county. I had some personal things for myself going on for a few months also. And so, that's why you haven't heard much from us. But we can report as often as we like. We can get your input on our plans. I mean, all of that is fantastic. I mean, that adds value.
I don't think, I think that would be the intention. It's just having a formal seat at the table to represent our citizens, you know? And so, it's unfortunate that it's being viewed as adversarial and not cooperative, but, I mean...
I think cooperative looks different. Like I say, this would be the first step to getting rid of your CMHP. It's the nuclear option, right?
No, I didn't see it as that.
This is the option that always exists. You talked about what if, what if, what if? This is what you would do if that what if happened and you're really unhappy with your CMHP. You petition OHA, you get that control back, you make a change.
Jerry, go ahead.
It's like putting an employee on notice or not renewing a contract. It's the same thing.
Jerry, remember, months ago, we got together with Juvenile and Sheriff's Department and, because they're getting some money from that Measure 110 and, you know, they wanted to hire... They wanted you to hire a...
A community counselor?
Yeah, a counselor. And I remember we were in the same room, all of us, and you said, "If you guys, you know, if you guys got this money and you can hire somebody, have we hired..." And we haven't hired anybody to find the people to do what Adapt is doing. And obviously, I'm the only one up here from the previous board that relinquished this. I'm in favor of Adapt.
I don't think anybody here is saying they're not in favor of Adapt.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying...
Nobody is saying they're not in favor of Adapt. They're just, there's a desire...
I'm reading a little bit that it's like, and I understood. I understood why we had to, you know, why they want this. They, because of the change. Since Jerry was here last time, there's two new guys up here. So, why wouldn't, you know, if I was in their, if I was in Adapt's shoes, I'd be in the same, I would be the same way. I would want the state or somebody to, that doesn't change every two years, to be... And we, it's not like we don't have any control. We've already discussed that. We have control. We have a place at the table and a voice. So, that's just my thoughts.
Can I offer this...
Yep, yep, come on. Come on, come on up there.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Bevan Ankrum, and I'm with the Oregon Health Authority. And I just wanted to share some of the rigorous reporting that goes on for Adapt, specifically between the programs that they support aren't all for the Oregon... For Oregon Health Authority specifically, they manage programs for both the coordinated care organizations and then a separate set of programs that are available to folks that are outside of the Oregon Health Plan. So, there are different programs that they administer. And I just wanted to make that clear, that not everything goes through the coordinated care organizations. But they do a tremendous amount of work for both sets of entities for OHA and then for the CCOs. And the amount of reporting that they do back to the CCOs and then to OHA really shows all the exemplary programs that they manage and how well they manage these programs. And I just really wanted to speak to that, that they have done an amazing amount of work here in Curry County. There have been a number of challenges that Jerry has already talked about. But I've been supporting Curry County for over 10 years and working with Adapt. And I really encouraged them to come in here because I thought they could make a lot of really positive changes. And it's been truly amazing to me to see the changes that have happened here. So, I just wanted to offer that as, you know, a very supportive plug, if I can. I have really been thrilled to see how many great stories I've heard from people that have lived here and have really found support in the counseling and services they've been able to have and they weren't available when CCH was here before. So, I just wanted to share that and offer my support as well.
Thank you.
I think that, I just wanted to speak to you. At least from my vantage point, nobody's saying there's not support for Adapt.
Great.
I think the conversation is, is having local authority in conjunction with the CCOs to work with our providers, not having essentially the state authority fill in for the local voice. So, that's all it is. Nobody has, and, you know, Jerry made his point clear that there's a, it's definitely a distinction. But nobody's, nobody's, in terms of what I'm seeing, is saying that they don't want Adapt here.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, no, that's not the case at all. It's just being able to have some local, you know, some local authority.
I think that what Jerry was speaking to, there are other ways to do that, too. I mean, the oversight function is pretty heavy already with OHA. I can tell you, I mean, Jerry's kind in that he probably didn't bring up all of the things we asked them to do as far as reporting and really what the CCOs are asked to do, that they have to work with, you know, their CCOs as far as reporting standards and those kinds of things. But it would be great if you, I would urge you also to talk to the commissioners in Douglas County and what they do as, you know, they're part of oversight, even working with Adapt in that capacity. I think that would be a great opportunity for the three of you to understand how they are reassured in that position as well. If you're interested in kind of learning about, you know, how they make all of that work well in Douglas County. I also support Umpqua Health Alliance, which is a CCO in Douglas County. That's another region. I've been working with Adapt for 10 years. So, I'm pretty familiar with those guys as well. And, yeah, I just think that would be a great opportunity for you, too. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other, anybody else would like to speak on this topic?
I don't even know where to start on this subject, but the first time I heard Jay's name was in Arizona when I worked for the largest community mental health center in the state. Actually, I worked for the development side of that. So, we had our LMHA, our CMHP. Then we had an associated foundation, which was a nonprofit. And we've talked about associated nonprofits and what they can do and what they can accomplish. And what we were able to accomplish was to provide other development kinds of things. For example, when we got the statistic that Arizona ranked third in the state for adolescent suicide, we were able to start a program, which is now... we were able to start a program, which is now its own nonprofit called Teen Lifeline. In addition to that, what transfers to this situation and why I'm making and talking about that relationship is... One of the things that I hear Jay saying, Commissioner Jay saying, is more input from the community. And I get that. And having previously been the chairperson for the advisory board for Curry Community Health, Behavioral Health, Mental Health Advisory Board. In fact, Jay was one of the people that encouraged me to take on that position because of my background. We were actually in a position where we took on also legislative functions and arm wrestling with the state. Because at that time, Arizona was funding less for mental health than every other state in the Union, even less than Puerto Rico, so we sued the state. And so that foundation could do all of those kinds of legislative things. Now, what I know is Adapt has development skills that Curry Community Health did not have. That was probably the biggest singular concern that I had about Curry Community Health, was the lack of development skills. And I'm not going to say skills, I'm going to say emphasis. And there wasn't really an effort to create the right Petri dish to grow the things that need to be grown. And that's a big difference that I see in Adapt. And I do sit on their advisory board, and I do sit on Advanced Health, Community Advisory Council, and I do participate in the Community Health Improvement Plan work, not only in behavioral health, but I do facilitate the Access to Healthcare Work Group. And when we talk about hyperbaric oxygen therapy, I've also talked about how that can work for veterans. But I also made a presentation to this board before Jay was on it, I believe, about how we could make a business plan balance, and substance use disorder treatment is a piece of that. Now, when the first thing that I did in trying to figure out how we could deliver services and what needed to happen with developing an H-bot provider was reach out to the providers that existed. I reached immediately out to Adapt. Adapt was the first to respond. I have not worked a person in development in behavioral health as accessible as Jerry has been ever. Okay? And I worked in a relationship, like I said, with the largest community mental health center in the state of Arizona. So, as we talked through all of that, great notes, good information. We're still in conversations. We have conversations regularly. If I have questions, I can get those answered. What I know is, one of the things that I'd like to see is more connection, a little bit... The advisory board tailored to spend more time gathering and participating with local input. I agree. But I think as far as the development side of things and recognizing where the missing gaps in care and trying to put together that continuum of care, that Adapt's done a good job, as far as I can see. And I'm a pretty nosy lady, as you know. I never learned to knit, so I try and build things in the community instead. And I have to say, as far as the relationship with the CCOs, I do see that things are moving along. We had a really good meeting just recently with both counties, Kuzan Curry County. And of course, when you have to do referrals into other counties, it's good to have that relationship, especially with behavioral health. And so I'm not seeing a whole lot that Adapt isn't doing, I would say, in the eight, nine, 10 range on a scale of one to 10. And we all know that continual improvement is a piece of the puzzle. And communication within the community has always been there. As soon as I talked to... When Jerry... When Adapt first came on, we talked about the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council. They want to get a person on that council. We need to have more support from behavioral health on that council, and I think that'll come. If we don't have that, I may not be able to continue that work because we need that backbone. And Jerry had mentioned that before. So, the things that are important to us, we have a job to communicate as well. And that's all I'm here to say, is let's all get better at that. I can't thank you enough for having this workshop. I think these kinds of conversations are absolutely necessary. And I really appreciate the work that people have done, everybody in this room, okay? Everybody in this room. And I hope that we can get a little bit further down the line with H-bots sooner rather than later. But I want you to know, I feel good about the local mental health authority, CMMHP, right now.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Again, Josh Balak from All Care Health. First off, I want to kind of like say thank you for bringing this up. This is an issue that is impacting all of Oregon. The behavioral health crisis is something that is a significant issue that some counties are doing better than others. And while what is going on here in Curry County isn't perfect, I can tell you, at least in my experience working statewide, we are trending much more positively than even some of the more larger counties that have far more resources. So, I want to like kind of start there. I also want to give you guys a word of caution, as somebody who has been now through some transitions, not just here in Curry County, but also in Josephine and Jackson Counties, which are the other counties that All Care serves, that we really are... Whenever you make these types of changes, especially if they feel even planned out over six months, they have massive ripple effects inside of your entire delivery system that take years to unwind. And I would make it abundantly clear that you have just gone through one of those big massive events and things are still rippling, un-rippling, right? That it's going to take time. And that every time you make a change, there are unintended consequences. And so, in this particular time and place, where you've got a good partner who's doing really good investments in a long-term kind of process, particularly in this case where recruitment and retention, and we recruit and retain, recruit and retain not just for behavioral health at All Care, but we do it for specialists and primary care doctors and dentists and you name it, that these are multi-year, like half a decade or longer kind of investments that you really do need to give organizations time. And it's something that I'm often up in the state saying, "Give coordinated care organizations more surety so that we make these long-term investments where around." I would say the exact same thing here for Adapt and our other partners. Surety is the secret sauce to building out a good program. But I want to call Commissioner Trust's... Traus, sorry.
Trost.
Trost, sorry, I'll get there eventually. Comments around that, hey, we want to have a public voice inside of how we are reviewing these processes, that this shouldn't just be, you know, the state doing reports, that there needs to be something more of like, hey, what's really happening at the ground? And how do we start to build things up? And so, you know, and maybe, maybe in a few years, this is where we really do need to go, where maybe you bring it back in. But can I maybe say, let's keep the position, the things in place that are currently in place, let the ripples kind of play out. And then we would call on you to work with you to have, invite us as CCOs to come down here on a regularly scheduled, either quarterly or monthly or whatever that is, to be able to report and say, hey, this is what we're hearing. I was actually talking to our behavioral health director. She actually said that she would be willing to do that. She's really sorry she couldn't be here. She was unfortunately unavailable. And then the other option, the offer that I really get, Advanced Health, you guys provided two, but I don't mean to throw guys in the bus, is possibly doing a listening tour in all three of the major cities. I mean, if there was more places we want to do it. And have the county commissioners there that would like to come, Advanced Health, All Care, and listen to the community and say, hey, where are the gaps? Where are the things? What are the things we really need to start to focus on that will help us to be able to really kind of create that oversight accountability? And quite frankly, I think it's even more meaningful if you do things along those lines than even the behavioral health authority that you do see, or the mental health authority that you do see some other counties using. So, I don't want to downplay the commissioners' concerns. I think they are valid and we should be doing more. But I also want to make sure that we do this in a very thoughtful, measured way, particularly as we are... We do have a fledgling program that is showing unparalleled results, so, thank you so much.
You bet. Josh, you're thinking more like a town hall.
I mean, it's however the... I don't know if town hall's necessarily exactly the right way to do it. It may be more focused. I think if you're really trying to... I think it would maybe behoove us to work with you and some of our community partners to say, hey, maybe we want to have invites. Because people who are suffering with mental illness may not want to be in a more public forum. There may be some places where it might make sense. Or we do a hybrid? I don't know. Like, I'm not a smart person, but I know lots of smart people. And we can... And I think we could figure out a right way to make sure that people were included and that it's open enough that we can get enough people to really get a meaningful chunk of results back, so, or comments back.
Yeah. So, I'm missing some, a level of disconnect here because I've yet to hear anybody from this commission say that they did not want to work with Adapt. All I've heard is that Adapt does not want to work with the county, right? And so, that's a difficult stance, you know? And so, that's, you know, in no way was this intended to be an attack or any of that nature. It was, I think, you know, just to have the conversation about unraveling a situation that occurred in the past.
And Commissioner, I... We didn't take it that way. I don't take it that way. I think you're bringing up good points of how do we make sure that the community, the folks that are being impacted on the ground are actually getting voices back up and in. One very clear way to do that is use your elected officials. I'm saying that the cards that are dealt at the current moment, if you start moving those cards around, they will have unforeseen consequences regardless of where those things are. And particularly when you're doing long-term investments at the size and the scope and the personnel that Adapt's doing, it's one of those places where you just want to kind of tread lightly as you go forward. I'm not saying maybe, maybe everybody gets into a place where they think that's the right place to go, but maybe there are some first steps that we can kind of take before we see it. And maybe we can kind of, you know, have our cake and eat it, too, for a bad analogy, so...
Okay.
I have to step out to go make a quick phone call.
Okay.
I will come back, though. I thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody else like to speak?
I just, you know, one of the concerns is, if I understand it correctly, one of the concerns is making sure that the county has input on what the local mental health authority or the CMHP is doing. Counselor Trost actually sits on our community advisory council, and that's where we gather our information. And if you guys are unhappy, then we can take that back and say, Adapt, this is what we are here... We hear that is going on through that feedback loop. And so, we want you to make... We want to make sure that your concerns are being heard and passed along as well. And that's part of that community advisory council position, if that helps in that conversation at all.
Thanks, Sam.
Anybody else? Lena, I know you're itching to come and talk. Dave?
David Barnes, I'm the county treasurer. I remember when this all happened and the money that was coming in beforehand. And there's probably 15, maybe 20 different GL accounts that are different services that are provided by the various people, that we put money into every quarter, every month. And from what I recall from the conversations, when we ceded this back to OHA, was that the county wasn't making enough money to support the services that we had. The money we were getting didn't cover what we were getting. And, you know, I listened to Jerry talk and I listened to, I'm sorry, I don't remember the other gentleman's name, but what I'm hearing is not so much adversarial. It's more, I think, that they got, they took on the role of providing these services to Curry County with the understanding that they were going to have four years to do it before we would even have, before this conversation would even start. And as Jerry was saying, you know, they've invested millions of dollars in this now. And for... I don't... I understand, you know, I thought at one point that we had a liaison to public health. When we gave it up, there was a commissioner who became a liaison to the public health and was supposed to be going out to meetings and going to talk to different groups.
Two different issues, public health and mental health.
I understand that, but there was... We had, somebody was supposed to be for our, for our public, for public and mental health, there was supposed to be somebody who these people were reporting to within the county still, was what I remember being told when this was happening, that we weren't giving it all up to the state, that we were still going to have a say in things. And somehow or another, it seems that we've lost that say.
No, there's a liaison for, like Sam had mentioned, there's a liaison for the CCOs. So, John works with All Care and I work with Advanced Health.
Okay.
That's the liaison ship that's currently in place.
Okay. And are, you know, I'm just, I don't, I haven't heard anything. I don't get reports and people don't ask me like they do you guys. But is there a level of dissatisfaction with our current system? I'm all in favor... I was very opposed to giving this up when it happened, and I'm all in favor of local control. I just, I'm curious as to, you know, I understand the impetus for this and where it started in Commissioner College, but I'm just, you know, this cost us money before and it didn't, we weren't getting enough from OHA to cover the costs of running a public health and mental health function for the county itself to do it.
Yeah, I want to be clear, like, I personally do not support the county running mental health. That's, that is, that was not working initially. It would, that's not, I don't believe, I don't know for you guys, but like, in the purview of the county running mental health, no, that's not.
Of course not. Yeah, we just, we can't find the people to do it, I'm sure. But then, so, then we moved to public health and I don't, I'm curious to know, when they talk about ripples, I'm curious to know what the ripple effect would be and what level we're looking at being more involved with the public health aspect of it, I guess.
So... So, after the county relinquished Public Health Authority, the state actually... So I guess we're going to transition into public health. Are we good with that?
Well, we had a couple of hands up prior, while Dave was talking, so who's hands?
I don't want to switch topics just yet until we get there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Are you, are you...
I can be done with this.
Okay.
I didn't want to injure, I just had a quick comment.
Okay.
Go ahead, got to stand up both. Yeah, they liked it. We got to have a record. Sorry.
So, there used to be a commissioner that did liaison with us. I don't know if that was true on the public health side. We haven't had that since the election and everything changed. So, we had someone that we worked with, we talked to, and gave them updates. And then we came in here and did updates. They let us know when it was time to do that.
Do you have Douglas' representation on your board?
No. Me Douglas commissioners?
Yeah.
Not on our board. We serve on the UHA board with the county commissioner, and we have Lipsec that's highly engaged. Very kind of powerful committee for us to get things done up there. We work with the commissioners on that. We work with the commissioners quite a bit. I mean, if they have a question, they just call us and we'll do what we need to do to give them the information.
Sure.
So, just wanted to say that that's a piece that changed since...
Let me, can I ask you this question, Jerry?
Yeah.
Do you have any Curry representation on your board?
No.
Okay.
Not yet. Our board is a nonprofit board, but we're an FQHC, which means over half of our board are patients or clients of the agency.
Connie?
The way that the community advisory councils of the CCOs are set up is to include a commissioner liaison. And in fact, they'd never had a commissioner liaison until Court Boyce came on. And when I started on the CAC, or the Community Advisory Council for Advanced Health, I worked with Bonnie L. She was laying out who they'd like to have recruited to be on that CAC. And they said, normally you have a county commissioner, but they'd never had one before. So I reached out to Commissioner Boyce, and he... So I reached out to Commissioner Boyce and he came. He attended the Community Health Improvement Plan efforts, the CHIP meetings. I know he attended Advanced Health Community Advisory Council meetings. I know he attended the, because I do the Access to Healthcare Work Group facilitation, he would participate and that's part of the Community Health Improvement Plan effort. So directly in that work group, and I don't know if he participated directly with the mental health, behavioral health work group, but that is available and there's an opportunity to do that. And then, of course, the CAC for All Care. So when I, when I said a little while ago that the county can do more, that's what I was referring to. And I was going to follow up with an email, but we're already in it. So that's, that's how the relationship was before and that commissioner liaison participated in those three ways.
Yeah, so I'm currently on the CAC with All, Advanced Health and Commissioner Hrazog with All Care.
And I got to confess, I haven't been a very good CAC, khaki.
Just man?
Kind of a kinky khaki or, so I, so I want to make a commitment to be a better CAC member. So. Was that you, Melissa? Is that, are you All Care?
No, I have Advanced Health.
Okay.
Laura is All Care.
Laura, okay.
Laura and Josh are All Care.
Laura, I'm confessing that.
Well, we have a meeting tonight.
Okay. What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. I got a, I got a meeting at five, okay. But yeah, we'll get together afterwards and.
And, and I was able to talk with Erin this morning at length. And then she just sent an email, I think, out to quite a group of people, so. Okay, so I guess the sentiment is that if we were to choose to advocate to the state to take back local mental health authority, then we would essentially be putting ourselves in the position of searching for a new provider.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay. Okay. Public health. So let me start with public health real quick, sorry. What prompted public health? So from, from my understanding, well, I know where a lot of the pitfalls of public health came initially. The county was not contributing towards public health to the providers. Public health has always ran in the red. It's a very difficult program to run. It was often offset by mental health dollars to be able to continue to provide. And, and it was, it was, it was a difficult situation. I know that at the time, the previous provider was advocating often to the county to assist. It's normal, it was normal at the time for counties to assist in at least up to 25% of public health costs. And, and at the time, Curry County was not willing or possibly able to do so. And so it was, it was handed back over. And, and since then, it's Coast Community Health has picked up the ball on public health, from what I understand. So the discussion around this, so, prior, okay, after it was handed back over to the state, to OHA, the, like, maybe it was COVID that prompted this legislation, but legislation was passed and it was essentially a public health equity bill that the state, then the state set a baseline for each county to provide public health services. Before, it was based on your population and some counties were given less than enough to even operate one person. The state came back and said that we can't have that. There's a baseline that has to be met. So every state, regardless of size, receives $400,000 for public health to at least administer one to two full-time public health people and help to run services. And then you're given subsequent money based on the population. That's the equity program. And so there was a discussion with OHA at the time, their director, and they were very, I, they were very delighted with the idea of Curry wanting to take back the local public health administration. And so that then prompted the continual conversation. So number one, I appreciate you doing school-based therapy for treatment for Gold Beach and Brookings. That's fantastic. It was, it was a huge hill to climb to get that going and it's an amazing bridge. So thank you.
Yes.
So that's where public health conversation stemmed. Am I missing anything?
That's it.
Okay. So is Coast Community Health in the same position as Adapt?
I, I wouldn't say that we are in the same position as Adapt. Honestly, I was, this meeting was brought to my attention yesterday afternoon. So I'm here just to kind of listen and gather information. So I'll just give you a little brief rundown of where Coast is right now. So our previous chief medical officer, Dr. Kellogg, was running the public health component of Coast. She since has left the organization, unfortunately. And so we were scrambling to develop our, figure out where our public health component was going to be coming from. We did just hire a public health nurse, a local Gold Beach person, which we're very excited about. And I was asked to take on the supervision of that nurse position. And so right now, OHA, we're in conversations with them. They're coming down to train both the nurse and myself for the next couple of months to get us running in the public health sphere. With that being said, I don't know if we have any very, like, huge, strong opinions where it goes or where it comes from. I mean, as somebody stated, I believe that there was a commitment to, there's an expectation of the state running public health and behavioral health, or the, running the program for four years. I think that's what they're committed to unless they, they have to go through a bunch of different programs and processes to get it back. But anyway, that's just where we are. So anyway, that's where we are currently with public health and Coast. So it's in transition. We're working on it.
Sounds like a huge transition, Lena. So you are just kind of, yeah, getting your feet wet and yeah, jumping in.
Here we are.
Awesome.
Any questions?
So a workshop in a couple of months might be a little better.
I absolutely am sure I will have much more to add in a couple of months.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, go. I'm just going to say if anybody else would like to speak to public health?
Sam, you look like you're ready.
Sam, Laura?
I, I, I don't know how much I can add to the conversation at this point.
Okay.
I'm with most of them, trying to get your thoughts as we.
Yeah. So.
About Bev with the OHA, do you have?
Okay. Okay. All right.
Well, I think we've, I mean, for me, I've received a lot of information today and a lot of it needs to be processed and contemplated. And, you know, I guess my, my suggestion at this point would be that we, we, we take some time to process this and come back and have another workshop to really dig in and discuss what this really looks like. You know, because as, I think it was Josh that mentioned the ripple effects of any and all decisions are going to, they're going to be, I mean, the ripple effects of just this, this convening, this workshop have obviously sent a lot of, of concern across the different disciplines. And, you know, I would, I would be in favor of, of, you know, maybe taking a month to come back next month to discuss in a workshop everything that we learned today. And I'm sure, I know I personally have a lot of follow-up conversations to be more knowledgeable in the topic.
And I think with, with like a month of notification, I mean, we heard about this last week.
Yeah.
And our behavioral health director is out of town.
Yeah.
Our, you know, our.
Same with All Care.
Medical director is not available to come in, so.
Right. So when I heard Lena say that she found out yesterday, that's, that's on us. That's on, that's, that's our bad. We, we dropped the ball there and Natasha is listening. So I'm going to make sure that everybody's invited. I mean, you know.
Well, I think everybody was invited. It's just that we're, it was, it was very, I know several, like All Care got noticed on Monday. I don't, I'm not sure, Sam, but.
I got it, you know, like, Thursday, Thursday last week.
Yeah, so.
Wait, yeah, you need a month. Yes, ma'am?
And Dana Drum at OHA, Dana said she didn't know about it either. And she would like be included if you wanted to talk further about public health as well.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
Yeah, include her if you would like to include her. She was about to be part of the conversation.
Name again?
Dana Drum. And she's, she's the one that manages public health for Curry County at OHA.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know. Where do you guys stand?
Yeah, I think we need to, you know, have another meeting. It's always good to talk about this stuff, but we need to notify, notice, notice it in a better fashion, even in our invites, you know, to say, and who else would, who else you think would, you know, needs to be here? And, yeah, because you got to be prepared and. So I think it was, I think it was good. It's always good to have people in the, in this room talking about stuff that is affecting us. It's, it's, it's affecting us, so.
Nobody wants to go ready, fire, aim.
No, that's not, and, and that's not going to happen. But I do agree with what Jay said and Jerry, I haven't gotten any negative feedback about Adapt or the services or anything like that. And that's certainly not the focus of what we're talking about. But the feedback I have got from the community is their desire for local control. That's it. And so it'll be interesting to see as people listen and process this and see who reaches out to us and continue the conversations with our community about that. And that is what is very important to me, is what the people want.
Sure. And, you know, obviously, I think there's going to be some other local officials that are going to want to maybe join in on this conversation as well, whether it's, you know, from school boards to city officials, you know, that may want to add to this conversation as well. So I think it's, it's, the, the point of this was just to begin the discussions, right? And so I think we've accomplished that and, you know, become more informed, gathered more information.
And I appreciate Jerry, I appreciate the presentation and it's nice to know, you know, I appreciate you being upfront and we know where we stand, you know? That's very helpful.
Yes, go ahead, Jerry.
I think for us, we want to, you know, make it clear, we want to work with everybody, right? Everybody from elected officials, the board of commissioners. And I think we have a history of showing what that can look like and still get the input and develop some really cool programs out of it that are responsive to what's needed. We're not perfect, right? So we've been doing this in Curry County for a little over a year and a half. The first six months were pretty rough. Second six months were better. And the last six months, things have really started hitting their stride. You can really feel the difference, at least we can internally. And I think you'll start seeing that effect start happening more and more in the next six months. So I think the conversation's great. We certainly don't mind a conversation starting about how we get the input people feel like we need in order to help make the program better. It's not just about our ideas, it's about what's needed in the community. And we have ways to do that and we can add ways that are specific to Curry County, so.
Thank you, Jerry.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions?
Did you have anything?
Okay. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, stand up and stretch your legs and meeting adjourned. Thanks, you all for coming.
Thank you.
Ted left us long ago. He said he couldn't hear, so he's going to listen to it online.